The special city council meeting workshop is called to order. Item number one, public comments. I have no one signed in on that sheet. Item number two, discussion regarding Excelsior Building.
Jim Algren, over facilities. And human resources. And G2B20.
All right. Well, as Serena said, I'm in charge of buildings and structures for the city. Discussion is on the Excelsior Building. And if you, hopefully if you look, you'll have a handout that we've prepared for today for discussion. There should be, basically it's two items to talk about. One would be the authorization for use of the building and their proposal. And the other would be the document that is entitled, "Excelsior Library, Art Center," that just talks about the expenses. What I'd like to do for you today is just cover those two and try to get the current status of the building, answer any questions you might have, and then ask for some direction from the council in terms of where we might want to go with this. If you look, the agreement or authorization to use the Excelsior Building is pretty old. March 31st, 1998. And that's the document that we have along with the proposal. Essentially, it says that any revenues that the Guthrie Arts, Community Arts Committee has would be given to the city. It has some requirements for reporting. And it also talks about the maintenance of the building that limited, the city agrees to provide the facility and also limited maintenance to the building. The other, there's two letters to Mayor Evelyn Nefew at the time. Basically, what I got out of that is that the Guthrie Community Arts Committee was a subset, if you will, of the Parks Board. And so, give you some worthiness there of where that came from. And it might provide for some direction here as we have this discussion. And you can see essentially the proposal was to do arts on a short and long-term basis. And that they had kilns, which they still have there, to do pottery-type work. And they also have, for lack of a better term, weaving machines to make, I think roofs and those types of roofs blankets. And that equipment is still in that building. So it's still there. And I'm of the opinion it's being used intermittently.
Every week.
There you go. It's being used, yeah.
I think on a daily basis.
In terms of, from my perspective, on the revenue side or on the reporting side, I mentioned that the document does call for some annual reporting requirements. I had a discussion with our chair, and I'm informed that the first 10 years or so, they did a very good job of doing that. But it's probably been a while since we've gotten an annual, a requirement of the annual report in order to, you know, to the city councils. Just to bring that up. Now, again, the agreement calls for limited maintenance of the facility. And if you can turn to the one page where we have, titled at the top, "Excelsior Library, Art Center." What we did is we just kind of went through and looked at the last three years of expenses. And that gives you somewhat of an idea of what the city has been paying to keep the art center viable, if you will. You can see those expenses by year by year. Without going into, you know, the details are on top. But you can see in 2011, roughly $6,500. In 2012, $7,500. And then 2013, you know, which had some very large repairs, if you will. But the total was $14,300. So there's certainly a cost of, you know, above and beyond what the agreement might call for in terms of limited maintenance. You know, and typically, we'd get a call, we being the city cabinet, get a call and say, "The roof is leaking," or "We have this problem," or "That problem." That's how we've done the major maintenance, which...
I went through it last week. Have you been over there? Did we saw the roof and all the water damage?
Yeah, there's a bunch of things.
Bad?
I've been inside too.
Yeah, you went to see, right?
It's bad.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Couple of the roofs are not even usable. And there's probably a lot of mold in there right now. And you could smell it when you walked in the door, like. And I think it's a historic building, correct?
No, it's not a historic building. It's just the significance of the building. It was the first African-American library in the state of Oklahoma.
Right. Okay. Well, to me, it's a historic building then, is what I'm looking at.
Well, they had, it was the building that turned down was historic.
Okay, the original one?
So what's the, what's the...
That's what we're talking about.
Oh, you're talking about...
Yeah. What do you suggest we need to do to amend?
You know, we've just ignored the agreement for a long time. You know, add it to our list of... So the last agreement was 1998, you know, thanks to former Mayor Nefew. And just let y'all retouch it. What the real issue is, is that it needs a new roof.
Yeah, really bad.
And we've done repair after repair, and it's not, it's not going to hold. Our quote that we got for a new roof was $65,000. So, you know, it's something that we could pitch into the next CIP. That would be pretty much the capital improvement project, so, for that kind of work. So the question is, I mean, it's kind of just open to you guys. Do we want to invest more money into it? Do you want, you know, we're coming to y'all for guidance on either age and agreement, or you could pitch this back to the Parks Committee. That's where it originally was voted on. And you can push it to your Parks Committee for recommendations to bring to you. So however you want to shake that. It's just going to take a lot more than...
They know that they're using it, and they like using it.
Yeah, they'd rather use it than somewhere else. And I know the photography room in there that Bob Bozarth was using said, he can't do anything in there anymore. He's afraid the roof's going to fall in. I hate to see the building fall apart. I know we have $65,000 just laying around anywhere.
Well, it sounds like you might have a mold or date in it.
That's, that's what I was going to say. That's the other thing. When you walk in the door, you get a whiff of it. You know it's in there.
You know, we insure the building. It's a break for a replacement at $225,000 or something. $250, oh, okay, $215,000, excuse me. You know, we pay all utilities, pay insurance. It's just a question of how much more money can the city put into it? And, or do we...
It's a city-owned building. The city owns it, so the city has to take care of it.
Well, the original agreement is limited maintenance. So if y'all want to change it to full capital expenditures, we need to update that agreement. Just, you know, that's, so I'm pitching to y'all, however you want to update the agreement. You can, we workshopped it so that y'all can go sleep on it. You can bring it back to another council meeting for a vote. You can pitch it to the Parks.
You need to let Parks Board...
Yeah, they need to look at it and see what their suggestion is to it.
If it goes back to Parks, can they use hotel motel money for this?
Ooh, it's not a, the ballot language is Parks capital. I don't think we could call a building Parks. It was really, I think, maybe everyone might know, it was like Parks and Recre... I don't know why it started in the Parks Department. I think because it was a recreational-type facility. But hotel tax is limited to Parks.
Or the city parks, well, it couldn't be.
It can't.
I'd say just send it back to them, and then we can work on together with them.
We put on the next Parks agenda. Nothing vital today. We just, we know that we're about to enter a budget season. And if we have to find $65,000, we've got to figure that out.
It's the same thing that's going on with the Girl Scout campus.
It's the same.
I mean, it's the same thing. There's any city, any building that the city owns, we're going to have the same issue because we're really sending it out to nonprofits. They don't have any money, can't fix it.
You could beat it over...
It's the same issue.
Well, no, you'd have to sell it if it's appraised that high. You'd have to sell it. Sell it to Lowe's better.
So, you know, do you sell it?
Sixty-two, less, oh, two years ago, really, for a...
We haven't redid it. I mean, we haven't redid it.
No. Because we never had it budgeted. You know?
And that was for...
I mean, that kind of helps formulate a decision.
Is that for a brand-new roof, taking everything down?
It's sixty-five thousand.
Well, it would be for, the current roof is a foam-based roof with a sealant coating on it.
Basically, it's a flat roof.
Yeah, it's a flat roof, yes. But it's not a built-up tar roof. It's a foam-coated roof. And we have experience with a similar roof, but different. At the library and also at the new Guthrie Public Works, where we put a membrane roof up on top. And so that $65,000 is a membrane type of a roof, which is, you know, a roof that's...
A thirty-year roof?
Yeah.
Yes, and it, yeah.
You're talking about a rubber roof?
It's a membrane, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's just a really expensive roof, too.
It is.
Kind of like a roof on a, you know, on a...
You could do a $15,000...
Well, that's my point, though, is that we're getting Mercedes-Benz pricing when maybe we shouldn't, I mean, if we're going to lock the price at...
It was just what was going to last.
The only thing I might add is that you've got a built-up roof, and then you've got this foam roof now with a, like a membrane on top of it. You'd have to pull everything off to get down to do another built-up roof, so... And we haven't had any bids or anything to do with that.
Well, just looking at a modified grid roof, that's a typical lay-down roof. I mean, I'm sure, I mean, I'm just, that kind of money is a pretty shocking number for that small...
Oh, yeah.
Maybe they could do it, you know? We could just hire somebody else come and do that.
Is there, excuse me, can I make a quick question? Is there a way that, before you, I'm really going to do something, but is there a way to leave to probably go and look at it ourselves to take a tour of the Excelsior?
Bob Bozarth has the keys.
Who does?
Bob Bozarth.
Sure.
And he'll take you, he'll tour you anytime.
There's really ladies in there. There's ladies in that do the weaving during the day. So you can go up there and fuck on the wall and hear.
And there's pottery, the ladies with the pottery in there.
Bob Bozarth did... I remember when it was, when we did it, because it was very nice.
It was $15,000 for just a simple... Those weren't competent that last long.
As you say, like any other nonprofit, providing a service.
We're putting a lot on you, too.
Yeah, it's just way too much for something that we don't use.
The other thing worth noting is the southeast corner, if you look at the structure on the outside, we keep having these shaky earthquakes. That corner is kind of separating from the building. And it literally could go on one of these small tremors. And then we'd have a structure issue to fix as well.
You probably already have a structure issue to fix.
Wow.
Maybe there already is.
Wow.
And numerous other buildings in this community, I'm sure, are getting the shakedown, too, so...
I mean, if we start, if we're down on structural engineers, we're talking $60,000 roof, something at some point in time.
Yeah.
One's enough is enough.
Let's kick it back to the Parks and work with them to include the option of selling it.
Their next meeting is June 17th?
July 17th.
Go with the cheap... Look at that as well.
July 17th. Okay. We got Tom. I mean, that, you know, just started early.
So the next meeting for the Parks Committee is when?
July 17th.
July 17th.
July 17th.
So then the next Parks Board?
Current base, they won't worry about it.
Anything else on number two? All right, number three, discussion regarding hotel excise tax.
All right, y'all had requested that you see hotel excise tax. And essentially, we emailed a ballot from, I don't know what year, 1998, that says the 5% sales tax goes to the city, and then two-thirds to tourism, and then one-third to Parks. And then I just attached for you what the Chamber has made from theirs, what Parks has made from their revenues. The positive is that this has been on the upswing for the past few years. In 2011, the Chamber received $72,000. In 2012, $105,000. 2013, $131,000. And year-to-date, we anticipate being very well over budget. So hotel tax revenues are bright over the last four years. I think y'all wanted to hug about the 5%.
The whole process is not, in the past years, there has been no administrative fee, even though it was on the ballot. That's not a problem. We don't, we understand that. But even when the city was doing extremely bad, doing furloughs, laying people off, doing everything we could to survive, we were still not taking money from this. And as a city manager, you have the right to run this city. If we don't like this surcharge, or that you're going in and doing this, then we need four votes to tell you otherwise. My request is that in the future, as a mayor, if you choose to administer and start collecting these fees, that my request and my recommendation is you let the city council know first. Because then, when people come to us and say, "What happened here? We haven't done this before." It would be very nice if we knew ahead of time. I know we can't do anything about that.
You can.
I mean, with four votes, we could. But right now, I just want to make a recommendation that as a city manager, you let the council know that you're fixing to invoke these things so it doesn't surprise us when we're in a meeting or somewhere or on the street, somebody comes up and says, "Why did this start happening?"
Okay, we did in a public meeting.
We talked about this a couple of months back.
It was, how go with the...
It was in a workshop.
Sure. But my job is to carry out what the ordinance are.
Yes.
If y'all want to change it, you're welcome.
No, no, we're finding out more and more stuff. We know that. But my recommendation and request is that you tell the entire council.
Okay.
So if we missed it somewhere, because when this started coming out, I didn't know this was going to be starting to come out.
It was in first of 13, so I don't think you were on council. We did this, it was a long time.
We talked about it a long time ago.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't since you've been on council.
So if it was in the first part of 13, it still took over a year to start to pull it, or about a year?
We talked about it in a workshop about bringing it back into place. Because this happened back when we actually talked about, when we actually brought in hotel tax conversation. When we talked about even bringing it, and even when it came to, and then you'd be had hotel owners show up.
So in the meantime, we have a new council come in. The old council, if they were in the workshop and they remember that...
I don't remember.
But in the end, we've got, we have new council.
Because we talked about it, and then right before or after that, we had, we brought it up on, where we had it in public discussion for, and we had everybody show up.
But that's okay. If we don't remember it, you're right. I'm doing what the ordinance says, so I'm letting y'all know.
And in the future, we'd like to know it in advance, if possible? Is that a problem?
To know what the ordinance says?
No, no, no. We know that there's a lot of stuff out there where there's a bunch of 5% fees and whatever else, and we haven't been collecting them. If you're going to start collecting them, I'm recommending and requesting, as a mayor, that you let the entire council know...
We did.
That we're fixing to start this. You did in 13. But that's all I request. Any problem with that?
No.
Okay.
I don't know of any other 5% deals out there that are...
There's a lot of agreements that we don't collect on.
Which ones?
Bluegrass Festival, some others that we just, we forgot to invoice.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we should just have one lump sum discussion.
We're redoing all those agreements.
There's a bunch of different ones, yeah.
I would just say that if it's in the ordinance or if it's in an agreement, it should be collected. If it's not being collected, that we're making a mistake to begin with. Because if it's there, we made an agreement and an ordinance to do so.
Well, some of the people are, like, for example, the Bluegrass people, they like approached Matt about the fee and told him that, this is what I was told, told him that they're paying $2,000 for the electric, and they're supposed to pay 15%. I don't know if it's gross or not, but that they, you know, they didn't have the money to do it. They didn't make enough to pay all that for the regular agreement, which the agreement should have been changed at some point in time. But then he just, you know, gentleman's agreement, "Okay, I'm not going to charge you," and he didn't charge the fees. And so, I don't, obviously, Melody must have done the same thing because they haven't, nobody's been charging those fees to the Bluegrass guys. And, you know, he told me today, yeah, he told me, he told me the other day when he was talking, he said, "You know, we've had other people ask us to come to their community." I mean, Edmond was one of them. So we need to be careful what we do because we don't want another, we don't want to lose something to somebody else.
And that agreement is on the Parks Board for the next meeting? Or, no, they already did it. Parks Board already has met on that one. I know we're getting really off-topic, I'm sorry. So y'all will see that agreement on June 3rd?
Because I thought it was going to be on tonight's agenda.
Or, it's not that... Oh, it's on June 3rd, I'm sorry. They made their decision last week, whenever they met. Yeah, it couldn't get on there quick enough. So what we're trying to do is exactly that. I don't have the legal right to waive fees. Y'all know that, right?
I understand.
Okay. So I can't do that. So what we do is we bring the agreement back to you.
I'm just requesting before we institute that, that we're legally capable of doing, and then the right to do, you bring it to us first.
And here's the thing, too, is that when you change those agreements, do you let the people know that you're changing the agreement with? Do you let the Bluegrass people know? So they can be there, too?
Wouldn't be an agreement if you didn't.
Well, right, but I mean, they could change it and say, "Here it is."
Oh, no, 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 we don't do that.
Okay.
No.
They have to be, they have to sign it, otherwise it's not an agreement. Okay. Any other questions on number three? Number four, discussion regarding chamber membership purchasing. I brought this up because it got brought up from a company in Edmond. One kind, there's two stores down there. One's a member, one's a not. One supports the city, one doesn't. And when you're going out to buy things from the city, and you're not doing it on the bid process, you can pretty much go anywhere you want to go. But I think we need to support those people who support us. I know that sometimes the stuff here in town is more expensive. But if by the time you pay gas and employee salaries and wages to go up to Edmond and get it, that the price comes back, Edmond is more expensive than here. And if there's a store in Edmond that supports the city, be it a chamber member, service organization of some kind, scholarships, anything like that, and the other one doesn't, we ought to support the one that gives those things back to the city. And so, I would like to see if we can get with the city and work a little closer on some of these people that, and without bringing up the names of the two that were involved in Edmond, that, you know, see if we can find some way to get this where we can support those that support us. To a point, I would agree with you, but if all things are equal, I would favor someone who was a member. But I don't, I don't think that that's our job. I think we're supposed to get the cheapest, best contract we can. And we shouldn't be looking at whether they're even a member.
Well, in many cases, you're right. Cheaper is, you're going to go with that. But if it's, you know, if it's the same store in a different part of town, it's got to be pretty much the same price, I would think. I may be wrong. But I'm just saying that we could also buy here in town. I'm just saying we need to look at the fact that if we have people supporting this town, we need to see if we can support them and still be within the confines of what the legalese are, the lowest price or whatever, when we're not going through a bid procedure.
All things being equal.
All things being equal.
But most of them, we're letting a bid, it's not equal necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with both of your sayings. The question I have is if you support, I'm sure there's several chamber people that are chamber members that don't support the city.
Yes.
So, I mean, this is kind of a two-way street here.
Yeah. And so, I'm in full agreement. If they don't support the city and they're just a member, then we don't need...
So now we're going to exclude them?
It's one of those things that...
You're on the side, I know what you're saying. It just seems a bit of a slippery slope to some degree.
I mean, something really go over and above, scholarships for kids and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. And then some of them don't.
And some don't, so...
And some of them probably are pretty good at giving, complete 180-degree opinions.
Yes, yeah. And it's just one of those things that it got brought up by a business owner. And so, I'm just passing it on.
Fair enough. I just, I think we get to a very slippery slope when we start, we start down.
We're to draw the line, but at the same time, it's one of those things that, I don't know, we need to be aware of.
If it came down to everything was tied, then maybe. Otherwise, I don't really want to let them bid.
And I know they don't have time to go looking for some of this stuff. I'm not asking them to. But again, there's not a whole lot out there, so...
Number five, streets, solid waste, and convenience center annual update.
Maxine Pruitt.
This sounds like a really crappy presentation.
You could have done something.
That's okay. Tenny was going to be here and do it. And he would have probably done a much better job than what I do, but he was out fighting a fire, a bad fire. So I'm here, I'm going to pick up, and hopefully can fill you in on what we're doing. Tenny is the superintendent, Tenny Makers is superintendent of the street department. And that department has seven employees, including Tenny. And for the first time in a very long time, he has a full crew. The street department's responsibilities include paving and repaving and parastreets of about 144 miles of streets and roads. We do street sweeping on a weekly basis. We're three days a week.
Four thirty in the morning.
Yeah. Four thirty in the morning, you're right. We take care of the traffic signals, the street signs, and the street striping, storm drains, drainage ditches, repairs and maintenance to the decorative lights. There's about 138 of them that we take care of. The ones east of Wentz, O'Ginney is responsible for. The downtown sidewalks and curbs. And this week, they have been able to get out and do a little bit of curb repairs. We haven't been able to do that in a while. So you'll be seeing a little bit of that going on. They also do tree trimming and brush removal and the ride-away. They take care of inspection and cleaning guard wells around 12 bridges. And we also handle city events. And those events can be anywhere from floods, snow removal, fires...
Weirdness.
Windstorms, you name it. And we also take care of 89 parade, Christmas parade, the International Bluegrass Festival, Territorial Christmas and Arts and Wines Festival, and anything else that gets thrown in there.
Make Guthrie weird.
Yeah, make Guthrie weird, that's right. That's part of it, too. That's one that was added. Anyway, we, this department of seven people does a lot. In our budgeting and funding, the maintenance and operation budget for these seven employees takes $262,341. And the material and supplies accounts run up to around $249,000. And then, of course, our vehicles and equipment and licenses, that comes to another $68,000, I'm sorry. And right now, we're handling it pretty well. We're in about the 50% range. And Tenny runs a pretty tight ship with his guys, and I appreciate that. Capital improvements, we have the street CIP, which we have let the contract out to the vendor. We haven't received it back yet. But the contract went for $174,000. So we'll take care of, oh, probably, we've got about nine streets, parts, parts of streets that we will overlay and take care of, and then we will have a ten-wheel dump that's part of our CIP. We have a front-end loader that's part of our CIP. And then our new ten-year, ten-wheel dump truck has just been received. It hasn't gone into service yet, but it's a beautiful piece of equipment and we're so thrilled to have it.
Now, you've got one ten-wheel already, right?
Yes.
And then a little one.
And we have a small one, right. And then the new one that has just come in. That, that is going to be really, really nice. Tenny also has a little wish list that we put out here.
He's been, yeah, you've been seeing it for a little while, but he would love to see
a seal coat machine and a crack seal machine, and a tractor and box blade and loader and a new pickup for his department. These things would help extend the lives of streets if we were able to have things like the seal coat machine and the crack seal. Because when, when the streets start to be, get this little alligator having cracks in them, if you come in with the crack sealer, it would help keep the water from working down into the street, therefore, working on the base. But anyway, that's, that's kind of where we are on the street department.
Remind me how many, how many miles of streets we do every year.
Almost.
Yeah.
Not very many, about a mile.
Yeah, and that's, that's my point. I thought that's what you were going to say.
Yes, about a mile.
So, that means that if we're going to do the whole city, it takes us a hundred and forty-four years to do it.
That's exactly right. That's, that's.
So that those streets have to last a hundred and forty-four years before we get around back to them.
And some of them.
You're kind of, you're kind of leading into my segue to their, her wish list. Do we make the departments do cost-benefit analysis for capital items?
Our, well, then we can talk about what, what we define as capital. I mean, we.
Well, yeah, I know, but I'm, I'm talking like on a, on a ceiling unit or whatever the crack seal. Crack ceiling unit. I mean, because if we know that that was going to have a return, it was going to pay for itself in the first year of use and then, you know, it's true.
If we had the money, we'd buy it.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, on some, some of the stuff, do we have, I mean.
I don't have a form or something, but yes, we look at, at maintenance costs, usually on our equipment to see when you're supposed to buy a new one, so most of our equipment needs to be replaced based on a cost-benefit analysis. We just don't have the money to buy it. So we, we wait until it blows up. We wait to have a nineteen ninety-four truck.
I know in the last meeting we were in, Tenny said that if we had that machine, we could probably save a lot of our streets from falling apart and stretch them at least, maybe, what did he say, ten years, I think, maybe fifteen years down the road before we'd have to make, make repairs to them.
They got to make it a hundred and forty-four.
There was only one vehicle bought this year in CIP. So, the ten, yes, in the city, in, in the entire city.
What was on with the other one? The whole frame was like twisted this way.
It was a, yeah, so we have very little opportunity to buy equipment.
I think you read it his last rights.
Yeah. You see it actually going down the road, like side.
It was running sideways, yes. I, I didn't think that looked very safe.
The convenience center and the solid waste, convenience centers operated by Joe Mackey, we handle just pretty much all the solid waste that falls under the DEQ regulation, disposal of solid waste, recycling. We do have newspaper, office print, aluminum and plastic drugs and that type of thing that we can accept out of the convenience center. And of course, you can see that we do not accept tires, batteries, appliances with freon and hazardous chemicals and liquids and that sort of thing, so. The budgeting for convenience center is, is pretty cut and dried, it's just the personal services. Material and supplies is, is not very demanding on us, and neither are the equipment maintenance. The contract is about forty-four thousand-five-hundred, and the revenue that we bring in, the projected revenue for this year was fifty-three, fifty-three thousand. And of course, sanitation is through Waste Connections. It's a private company, which we have been doing business with now for the past ten years, and they've been a, a good company to deal with, and it looks like that we'll probably be bringing the contract to you, council, probably sometime in the near future. That's pretty much it. Any questions?
Come on, please.
I was going to say, crap taffet. Everybody knows that right now, so.
I heard you.
But we didn't do sewer plumbing.
We did.
But we did do drainage.
I know we don't accept any of that, like freon and stuff, but how many, how much stuff do we actually pick up where people have just gone out and dumped it? You know, when I farmed out south of Guthrie, they just brings, you know, people would show up in the middle of the night when I was out there cutting hay, and they'd just back up and throw it in the ditch and drive off. I know some of that's not in city limits, but, and I know the county has to clean that up, but I didn't know, do we clean up some stuff like that occasionally?
Occasionally, yes.
Okay.
Occasionally, we do. Thank you.
All right, thanks Maxine. Item number six, discussion regarding agenda items. I think number three is the hot one right now.
Literally.
On the fireworks. We've got all kinds of things. It's overwhelming, it seemed like, to cancel it, but at the same time, we need to look at some other possibilities. I'm going to recommend we table it, so we can look at this a little bit better. So if you have no problems with that, that'll give us time to, to really look at this a little bit better, and the safety issues, the family issues, city issues, and things we need to look at. So unless, if somebody else wants to talk about something, that'll give us more time to go over and look at everything we got to, to consider on this thing and get some more input from people in the community, so.
I think that's the right answer. I think it's a knee-jerk reaction just to ban it all of a sudden, just without looking at what is the problem, where did this come from?
Yeah.
So we need, we need to look at it.
Is there a decision that needs to be made before the fourth?
Yeah. Right now, we're in a burn ban, so we're, we might be okay on that aspect.
We've already had a request for someone to sell within the city limits.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, is how many people we have that are already lining up to.
It's the sell side that would need to be addressed as soon as possible, at least that part.
Which I don't think would provide us to be changed at all.
It wasn't going to be changed. They were, asked us in the last workshop to keep the ability to sell, and then, so we wrote the ordinance that way, and then, but not allowed to ignite, because the kids sold.
As long as the burn bans affect, we don't have to worry about it.
As long as the burn bans affect, it's nil anyways.
Yeah, it kills the whole thing.
So we can't sell permits.
It may be still in a burn ban.
You can still sell. You can still sell.
I mean, you can sell it.
You can sell them when they come out.
They have to go somewhere.
But they'll buy it anyway, because.
You can go to Chief Harlow's driveway.
I'm going to make sure I get onto you, because you're chief.
I think if it's a table on the June 3rd, you can always do an emergency plot if you wanted.
Y'all, y'all want to put it back in on the June 3rd, that'll give us a little bit more time to, to look at it, you think we'd, you'd be okay on that?
Yeah.
Table it for now and, and go to the June 3rd for a final vote on the fireworks?
Right.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Give you a chance to check, look, see what else we've got to do. All right. Any other agenda items that you wish to talk about?
Here for Guthrie weird. Just here for later. The La Terra Studios. Talk about that.
Sure. Renee is the project manager and runs a downtown improvement committee, so if you want to brief them.
Okay. We went through and did an RFP, and we received four responses to the request that we sent out. What this is, the downtown improvement committee's been meeting, oh, at, once a month on, on the first Friday. One of the items that they brought forward was the idea to do something with the area on First Street between Oklahoma and Harrison. And so as a result of that, that initiated the movement forward to go ahead and execute bid, or not execute bids, but get proposals sent out, and what's before you tonight is the actual bid for the design and engineering process to go through and take a look at that location and see what we can do in terms of creating that section of the street as a downtown placemaking venue where people can congregate and go.
So the total on this is two-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars to spend, right? Is that?
Approximately.
It's a guess.
Because you don't know construction.
Yeah, but you, it's still always.
Is that minus the sixty-one-seven?
In addition. It would, that would, what's before you tonight is the sixty-one thousand, which is for design and engineering fees and survey fees.
Right.
Okay, so the two-hundred.
Is in addition to that, that's my question.
Yes.
There's two, okay.
Two-hundred thousand in addition too. Right. Once the, the La Terra will make the actual design. Once that comes about, and they are, they are estimating around the two-hundred-thousand-dollar figure, once they define what the design is and the design committee takes a look at it and then comes back to you all for a final decision on that, through that process, then you will, right, then you will take a look at, at the budget for construction and determine what you want to do with, with paying for.
Okay, so they're estimating a two-hundred thousand for the project of converting Front, or First Street?
Yes, that's what they. You got it, that is absolutely correct.
Okay, I understand now.
I mean, if the committee comes back and wants a splash pad and, you know, and it starts growing.
Right.
Then we've got to come back and chat.
Right. Part, part of this also includes, it's, it's one of those items that we have a consultant here. The project, you know, is, is big to us, but in the scope of things, is, is a moderate-sized project. We asked them also to take a look at designing curb extensions and then going through some of the core area in the central downtown and come up with a schematic, not, not a definite, but an idea plan for doing landscaping areas in the downtown. So you're, you're looking at three items specifically, okay? One will be, shall I say, a thing, which would be a re, a renovation of the First Street, and then a, a design document on landscaping in the area, in the downtown area, and curb extensions. Those would just be, so you'd have then two items of just design.
Okay.
Okay?
I've been to, I think, not all the meetings, but almost all of them, James, help me out here, but I thought that in our last several meetings that we had, that we had, had one of them to look, or some group, not, maybe not necessarily them, about a broader, a broader scope of what, what we should do in Guthrie.
That's in there. Well, the bump outs, that, yeah, that schematic.
That was included, but I'm just, it's just like, I would hate to do something, forced to do something now and spend all this money in doing it, and then, long-term, I mean, the bump outs are okay, but I'm talking about First Street, basically. You know, what if, long-term, we decided, well, that, why did we do that, we should have done this, but.
Or you just don't move on it, like we've always done. I'd move on it. I mean, I'm sorry, it's one of those, or this community keeps telling us, I've heard it for, and, and it's been talked about for five, ten years, to close down Second Street and make it a place where people can love and play and laugh. You have the money to pull the trigger. I, I, I'm sorry, I usually don't get real opinionated, but this is something that would be great for kids, great for people, great for families, and it's one of those that we can keep looking at the big picture, but we got an opportunity.
I heard several people asked you the same question.
They want to know when we're doing it.
They want to know when we're going to start this project.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's a good project.
Now, our next meeting is May twenty-third, did I read that right? That's when they're coming to town?
Actually, they are going to tomorrow. Be here tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, they will.
If y'all pass it.
Right, yeah, if you all pass it. They'll be here late in the afternoon tomorrow, but Thursday, they will be in this room all day, doing some design work, and it's open for people to come and go and see what they're doing.
But this committee has no meeting?
Yes, the, the committee has a meeting on Friday at noon, where at that point, they're going to show the draft, the committee can say, hey, this draft looks pretty great, or wait a second, let's tweak it here and there and come back later. So that's, that's where we are.
Okay.
And that's where those little change, oh, and some you could say.
No, it's a good idea, I'm not saying, I just wasn't clear about.
But they could say, hey, maybe we could use some of that design money and look over here, you know, and we're not opposed to that. We don't know what's going to happen in that committee meeting.
Right, so basically, you're going to, you've asked them to take a look, and they're going to give you their opinions as architects.
That, that is correct. And that's what I, well, we conveyed it to them in part of the, the interview process, because we interviewed all, all four applicants, was while you're here, this is what we have in mind. For the last five years, we've all been talking about this area in front of the post office. This is what we think is a good idea.
Right.
But landscape architect, you're, you're the professional, you're the one that's certified. You tell us if there's another location, but this is what we think is right.
Perfect. It still has opportunity to go a different direction.
You bet.
It always has opportunity.
All right.
Yeah, I'm just curious, so if we spend the sixty-one thousand, we do have the money to execute an additional two-hundred thousand or whatever.
Right, now you're doing.
And we'll hit something. So we don't spend the money on a plan and then we don't have money to execute, so.
Right.
And hopefully we'll get those additional grants and things of that, but we will have two-hundred thousand on top of the sixty-one thousand. I really like that architect, by the way, but sixty-one thousand, that's a high percent, is that?
Because we have nothing.
Yeah, because that is not just the design fee, there's survey fee, there's engineering fees.
There's a lot of A and E.
It's not just the.
Yeah, no, that's not just, trust me.
Yeah.
Because at first I looked at that and went, whoa.
Okay. Because there's a lot of A and E in part of that.
And we have nothing done.
Okay.
Thanks Renee.
No problem.
I know, I've been into Edmund lots of times, and when they first did all their streets and went in and did all the parking spaces, and I thought, oh, this is a stupid idea. Now, the more that I've driven down there, I see more people in that area now shopping than ever before, and it's making people get out, even though they have to park in the parking lots behind the buildings, they get out and walk through the downtown area. And so, I mean, and I know Randall's got, I'm sure his business is down there, he's probably got some walk-in business as well, more his offices down there, so I, I know it works, and I think it's a great idea, so.
All right, any other agenda items we want to talk about? Item number seven, request for future rounds of discussion, anybody want to throw anything out there?
I did, just hope like, is there, I knew one, I mean, I know we're always pinched for money, and it's always everybody wants one, one, but the ballparks down, and I just fired off the note because I was totally looking at it out, from a friend of ours, to me, the ballparks where the kids play in Cotwood Flats.
Okay, Cotwood, not Owens.
Yeah.
Kowans.
Yeah, I didn't, is there, I mean, are those our backstops, the cities, there's our trash cans, I mean, it's pretty rough.
The backstops?
Yeah, I mean, there's holes like in the chain link.
Okay, well, we'll look at it.
Just, I mean, just in general.
Do you want on the agenda, or do you want us just to do it?
Well.
We painted them, but I don't think, we refurbished them.
All the backstops are brand new.
Oh, yeah, backstops are brand new.
Everything back down here's all new, because I've been, they're all brand new.
Are they talking Kowans?
Maybe.
Because we just redid all those bleachers.
We did one.
Well, oh, oh, we're about to do, sorry.
Well, okay.
Our field at the Kowans field.
Is it? Well, you know how that goes. Let's see if you.
Field down here in Cotwood Flat, that's all new stuff down here. And after a month or two, suddenly replaced all those, we got new dugouts coming in.
The dugouts, I think, the Lily.
Did we get the soccer fields figured out with water?
They've asked for a lot more, so we're going to talk to them and take that agreement back to Parks and back to y'all.
Well, I did, maybe, and that's something that we throw to back to Parks, is just an overall review of all of our fall fields.
Because I've met with them on the fall fields, and they had an account of money, and they were going to do some things, I don't know if they did.